Are you still doing garlic?
Yes, just for myself, yes.
The microphones are on, so don't say anything you don't want recorded.
Keep me in mind if you have extra.
What was this thing for artists and metric? What did they do? Uh, that is being reimbursed by insurance.
I love having a choice of where I sit and just what the groceries are.
It was a car accident, this guy went through the triangle. I think the utility pole ruined the electrical service that we use for entries. Unfortunately, the mayor's other car was hurt this weekend. Directly after the K W C. I don't want to forget who I am.
Talk about the.
Is there anything online I can look at?
Right? Yeah.
We're being drafted. She said it can't be this long, the bigger.
Hey, yes. Good to see you. Thank you.
I was sixty.
It was sixty. I mean, absolutely. People said actually you were last. And then he didn't want his dress, he just had it up to the middle of the portal. So that even if you don't get all of them free.
All he did was.
Having it ready is for the most.
As long as we got to work.
Hello.
Hello. Now we're going to stop the. Yeah. That's what I'm right.
Didn't say, yeah, it's not by even possible.
Thank you.
It turns. I think I.
Right, six o'clock, they know where to meet, the order.
Oh, good.
June ninth, two thousand twenty five. First of our visit. Hello? I got that one. Public comment, if you have a public comment, please come to the podium, speak your name and address. Uh, address your comments to the board and not to the audience.
John Tappin, Chair and Bookkeeper for the Trustees of Trust Funds. Uh, my comment is actually not a public comment. Um, but because of the scheduling, uh, for the late, um, date at which the trustees of trust funds receive the reimbursement request, uh, we were not able to hold a meeting and get on the agenda. So this might be a topic that you prefer to just discuss during new business or old business category. It's up to you. It's about, it's about the reimbursement request.
Yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes.
In an attempt to avoid the fiscal year twenty twenty four reimbursement situation that prompted a recommendation from the auditor, the trustees of trust funds in a May seventh letter stated that the twenty twenty five reimbursement requests should be received by the end of May. Had this been done, the trustees were supposed to meet on Wednesday, June fourth, and the comments I have tonight would have been made in the letter and an agenda item. But the reimbursement request would not receive until Friday, June sixth, allowing no time for trustee meeting or agenda request. For fiscal year twenty twenty four, reimbursement was requested for more than seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in expenditures that had not been voted by the select board. The board had to make those approvals after the checks had been written. In a letter sent to the select board on September third, twenty twenty four regarding the twenty twenty four reimbursements, the trustees stated, quote, "There does not seem to be a process that connects trust and reserve fund expenditures, either by valid article or select board vote, to the payments for those purchases." The trustees received reimbursement requests for expenditures that were not previously approved, end quote. Now for fiscal year twenty twenty five, this problem continues, with a request to reimburse more than a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund for expenditures that have not been approved by the select board. In addition, this hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars is expected to come from a fund that has a balance of less than a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. On March twelfth, twenty twenty four, the town approved Article Four to raise and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars for library renovations in fiscal year twenty twenty five. The select board has previously asked how much of this appropriation has been spent. The answer they received was not made public. This reimbursement request is asking the trustees of trust funds to do, uh, something that they have no authority to do, to make spending decisions from a reserve fund. Only the town or the town's agent can make those decisions. In this case, you, the select board, are the town's agent. The town still does not properly track where the money is to come from and where it's to go.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. You want to make a public comment or?
I, just a clarification, if I could. Um, the, the auditors did indeed, uh, find fault with the way that trust fund money was moved, but it had nothing to do with it being moved, uh, in May or June or August or July. Their recommendation was that it be moved in accordance with the projects throughout the year, not at one particular time. So I think that's important to clarify.
Hold on. Does anybody else have a public comment? No? Okay, we'll start from one.
Uh, the auditor's comment was that at the end of the fiscal year, there was still one million eighty-one thousand dollars in reimbursements that had not even been requested. It didn't get requested. Didn't, the request process did not start until August first.
Have nothing to do with request process. I'll forward the notes to the board. All right. Any other public comments? Seeing none, move on to the next one. Meetings. Katrin Casper.
Hello, Katrin Casper, sixteen Elder Osborne Drive. I apologize. I have no memory, that's a little hard to talk, but I wasn't going to miss tonight because it's not important to me. I'm speaking because on May twelfth, after a non-public session, not being on the agenda, not that we knew about, a decision to not fund SRPC was made. Uh, I think at one hour and thirty-something minutes and uh, without any discussion, that information for the town. I included the information about how at the deliberative session where, uh, Rebecca Hawthorne was and many of the townsfolk, we talked about how important SRPC was to our region. And we decided, after it had been taken out of budget, to add it back in and followed all the appropriate processes for that. And then the money was added to the budget specifically for SRPC. Many people in this room spoke that day. Many of the people in this room have been, um, state reps, flood board members, incredible members of our community who understand the importance of SRPC. I myself have served for several years. I have brought so much money in grant funding. I have brought information and knowledge. I realize that in this past year, I did not come and speak to you about the work we were doing. In all the other years I'd been on the select board and I was able to share it kind of more organically. I'd be very happy to set up a regular schedule to come and discuss the work that's done there because I think that there's some miscommunication about the work that's done at SRPC and how vital it is to our community. One thing I'll mention that I think is really important and I'd love to let other people speak is that currently UNH is working on a large project called West Edge. It's a great project. Super excited about it. I just want to know some simple things. UNH and Durham get water from Lee. They use the roads. If they come out of West Edge, they will come into Lee to get onto the highway. Somebody needs to speak for us in these moments. They need to talk about how that will impact us and make sure someone's representing us. There are other things that happen. I'm also on the brownfield committee talking about how to make sure we're taking proper care of brownfields and using the funding to do that work. And we're also working on bike paths so that people can get from community to community. We currently have on the books a very large, um, project titled that triangle that's such a mess in town, town, Lee. And that wouldn't exist. That's, that's free funding, several million dollars for the town of Lee because I spoke up and said, we need help. We can't afford that ourselves. We need some support and help. There are so many projects that happen only because somebody from our community shows up and says, hey, hey, don't forget us. If we're not in those rooms, we have no voice. So I would love to answer any questions, but I'd love to let, there's so many people here to speak today. Anyone else who would like to speak to them on it?
Anybody else? Maybe sit in over there, Mr. Rebecca.
Rebecca Hawthorne, sixty Fox Garrison Road. I just hope, I, I'm due to, of, a range of circumstances. I was the only flood board member at the deliberative session. And the discussion about the funding being cut and whether or not she put down went on for quite some time. Many people from the community spoke about it, talked about why it was so important. They amended it and put it back in. Everybody there voted for it, I believe unanimously or almost unanimously. And whereas, yes, you guys can get aside what you'd like to do with that extra six thousand dollars, I do think it was very clear from the people at the deliberative session at least, that that was what they wanted that money to go towards. So I do think it's important to give, to acknowledge that. And if you're going to choose to use it otherwise, I think then you owe them kind of an explanation. Thank you.
Lou?
Sorry, Lou.
Uh, Lou Prunden, fourteen Allee. I just want to quickly say I support rejoining S P or C. Um, I think it would just be wise for the town to, to have those grants available and to be in, in the circuit and to have a voice in what happens during the town. So, very short. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nada Kane, twenty-two Toon Lane. I was at the deliberative session. I spoke in favor of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. I'm well aware of the impact it might have on the town of Lee if we go unrepresented. We need to know what's happening, the decisions that are made about the region. We can't do that if we're not there. We need a voice at the table. And representation is everything. Please put the money back into the budget where it belongs. We spoke. We, the town of Lee, need this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, Carol Doring, fourteen Allee. And I just want to, um, reiterate and back up what has been said already. The SRPC is very valuable to Lee. I know it may seem like one more organization and one more set of dues, but it truly is valuable to the town of Lee. It has been in the past. It will be in the future. And besides that, it was decided at the deliberative session that we should continue with this organization and that was the voice of the people. And therefore, voice of the people ought to be respected. All right. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Kent Casper, sixteen Elder Osborne Drive. I'd like to share this for you. This is the estimated surface water elevation and inundation depth for a hundred-year flood event. It's been raining a lot this spring, uh, every Saturday, I believe, for the past thirteen Saturdays. This map is not something the town of Lee has the resources to create. And yet, it's vital to our planning and our decisions as residents as we look at the future and what the future holds. This was something that was done by SRPC as part of our membership. I'd like to say a couple of things about that membership, especially because Mr. Tappin was talking about big numbers. I think I heard over a million dollars of funds. The dues here are five thousand dollars. In addition to everything was said by the other members here, it's a relatively small amount of money. And when we look at the value, simply this alone would be worth the value. During my time as a volunteer on the Trails Committee, the access we had to the mapping portions that are available to us only through SRPC allowed us to look at where we would put trails and how we would have the least impact on the wildlife and the wetlands, um, in those designated areas. Finally, I think to echo what others have said tonight, the ability to be in the room where these decisions are being made, where things are being talked about, and where literally tens of millions of dollars are being allocated in our county is essential. And to voluntarily take ourselves out of those discussions is really, uh, again, as someone else said, demands an explanation to the residents of this town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Susan Mayer, twenty Sawyer Road. I'm not going to speak to the issue because many already have. I'm going to speak to the process here. This, this was something the citizens of Lee discussed in the deliberative session and approved there and voted on in, when they voted. And, um, that expresses the will of the voters of Lee. And you are the representatives of the people of Lee. And I think it's your duty and responsibility to respect the will of the voters. And that's what democracy is all about. And, and I just see this as a violation of, of the democratic rights and the, um, democratic process as it should exist in this town. And that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I am Robin Lunderlich, one Alderbrook Way. And, um, I'm just going to speak from a different perspective. As an owner of Take Five, um, we have, we pay all kinds of dues to all kinds of things to, to get resources to. And in the beginning of doing that, I was opposed to the subscriptions and the dues and all the things that, that we did. And, uh, have come to realize that it's a valuable resource and supports our organization. And in a similar fashion, six thousand dollars is a minimal amount of money to, and I looked into this, whatever it is, and, uh, and the work they do and what other people have said is, would be supportive to the town and it seems imprudent to, to not participate.
Thank you, Lou. And Tappin?
And Tappin, one eighty-seven Stepping Stones Road. SRPC, there's a very important word in that, um, those letters, is regional. Every town is part of a region and Stratford Regional Planning Commission brings that perspective. The rivers don't end at our borders. The roads don't end at our borders. The aquifers don't end at our borders. Various issues and problems. Those, those are the kinds of issues and problems that need a larger perspective. So I, along with the other people that have spoken, I think that the, uh, membership dues in Stratford Regional Planning Commission is a good idea.
Anyone else? Mr. Cox?
Chuck Cox, thirty-six, Captain Smith Emerson Road in Lee. I guess I would certainly speak that, uh, there's been, everyone here who has spoken says this should be carried forward. Uh, my experience with it went way back many years ago when we, we formed the Oyster River Watershed Association. Uh, they were very, um, forward in getting this thing formed. I think it's done a great job. And, uh, there have been, I know recently there have been some, some, uh, experiences with the regional planning that have not been as, as productive as we'd hoped. But I think in general, this is something that we should be doing. The resources in the planning and the maps and everything else, I think is important that we, uh, keep going with this. So I guess I'd say in support of this and I will, the, uh, the trust, the select board will see that this, uh, that we do maintain a membership in the Stratford Regional Planning.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Catherine Coverdill, nine Wonky Falls Road. I just learned about this this weekend and I did some digging into the, um, planning commission website. And as a resident who hopes to live in Lee for many, many decades in the future, um, I am in full support of being on this commission. I think it's important to have sustainable development in communities and they do so much for our towns and our regions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Nobody else? So, one of the, I don't know which one you would want, explanation. Um, during the budget process, this is, this is me. This is not the board. This is just me. Uh, during the budget process, we were told by the Conservation Commission that this is the service that is no longer needed. They do not perform. And in terms of getting maps and stuff, the membership saves us ten dollars per hour off their rates in terms of doing things for us. Not worth it, they said. The Planning and Zoning Administrator Karen Rossi told us the same thing. She has been against this particular thing because they do not perform good customer service. So all we're hearing from the people that actually use the service, other than what you've already expressed, is it's not real. They have bad customer service. They came to do some scanning for us. They made a mess of our records. And they have been still even giving us the data yet. That was months ago. So I'm seeing an organization that might have value, but they're very bad in terms of customer service. So that's where I'm coming from. Uh, I'll let the other two gentlemen speak for themselves, but I think it sends a message to them, if anything, clean up your customer service and do a better job. Well, that's what we're seeing. So, I don't know if you gentlemen want to make the comment.
Let me make a comment as well. I've been sitting in the planning board for years and we have used their services once for a while. And I can basically back up what, uh, Selectman Bugby has said. At the same time, we don't get customer service. And I tend to listen to the people I work with and listen to the planning director and so forth when they say this type of, uh, organization is not as useful as it can be. So that was the reason I had voted to not continue.
Mr. Benson, do you have anything to say? The other thing, just to let you know, we got a confirmation letter from Stratford Regional that we're there, we are terminating our membership. It was addressed to town of Madbury. Sorry. Nottingham, excuse me. So, Madbury, Nottingham is not paying dues either, so we're not the only ones. So hopefully this sends a message to them to clean up their act. So I see, uh, there's value in their service, but they need to do a better job. And I don't know what else to do in terms of, you know, giving them that message, but they need to do something better. Ms., Ms. Casper. Ms. Casper. Or Ms. Casper. Or Katrin Casper. One of the Caspers.
Katrin Casper. I appreciate, I understand. I've heard these same stories many times. I think all stories have more than one side. And I do think that it's important to understand that there's been some miscommunication. Has there been poor customer service sometimes? Yes. Do they feel very uncomfortable coming into our town because of how they're treated? Yes. To me, a brand new person who was working on this, um, natural resource inventory who was greeted with a lot of frustration, I take some of that credit. I found out a few days before the grant was due that that natural resource inventory money was available. We could get it. I had been working with UNH. Was very concerned about fire safety in our community because we had had some really dry times. We had ashes and other fires, uh, trees dying. And UNH said, until you have an updated natural resource inventory, we can't work with you. So I said, well, that's an important thing. I spoke quickly to somebody from the Conservation Commission. Hey, is this a good idea? Like, let's do this. We, as a flood board, decided for them to do. It's all very rushed. So the Conservation Commission didn't feel really included in that decision as a whole. I apologize. Again, had I had more time, I would have done it all the right way. But that brought a very contentious feeling to that room. I was in those rooms those early times. The person became very flustered and frustrated. Stratford Regional Planning Commission ended up spending over seven hundred dollars extra of their own money because we asked for things that weren't part of the process. And they wanted to make us happy because we complained about everything that they do. They're trying so hard and it got, it got messy. And they apologized for that so many times. And they feel terrible that that went badly. If you look at the NRA now, after all the work and Conservation Commission did a Herculean amount of effort to make that all cleaned up and perfect, it's an incredible resource for us now. We also have some communication about how this, um, documenting, I'm not going to get into all of it, but sometimes it's easy as an employee to complain because it was extra work. It was frustrating. And maybe it didn't go smoothly all the time. And I appreciate that. I honor that. As the executive chair of the commission, executive chair of that, um, commission, I say things like, this is unacceptable. We have to do a better job. And so I can keep track of those things and I can say, this isn't good. This isn't okay. We have to do more. Let's make sure we're checking in. Maybe we should have more, you know, after something's done, have some sort of way to communicate that because it sounds like no one's really getting the information in a helpful way. I can't do that sitting at home. I really can't. None of us can improve if we don't know what we're doing wrong and how to help it. And I understand. I get, I feel, I feel what you're trying to say. If we don't pay the dues, then fine. For a year, maybe they'll learn and they'll do better. But that's not, you didn't really send a clear message. It was just a frustrating message. The reason they probably sent the Nottingham letter is because they're upset. They're, they're frustrated. We have one in the town not paying dues. That was Nottingham because they didn't pass their, um, budget. And they had to figure out where to cut money from. Our community put the money in. You don't have to worry about where to cut the money from. And Nottingham has said that they want to pay for it this year because it is so important and they felt that. It has nothing to do with the ten dollars off. It has nothing to do. And if you never want to do a project with SRPC again and the town of Lee, great. It's fine with me. I don't care. What I don't want to do is not have us represented when we're doing projects that affect all of us. So if that's your biggest complaint, great. Don't give them any more time. Don't ask for any grants. I won't ask for any grants and we'll just, you know, not do that side. But you can see, I, I gave you so much work that's been done so we can truly understand statistics, information that we have to know so we can make better choices. We're here to represent this community. We're not here just to decide what, you know, a couple of people that work for the town say. We represent us. And we really need to have our voices heard. I appreciate, I also listen very carefully to what the community, like, the members of the town say and their voices are matter too. We don't want to frustrate them. But as a community, we need to make sure we are part of the big decisions.
I would just like to follow up for President Kent Casper. If the town votes in town meeting for an expenditure, but a town employee doesn't like it, does that mean it is now optional for the town to do that?
No, the, the town employee said this during the budget process before the deliberative session. So, that was the case. Any other comments? Nope? Board's pleasure?
I'm not ready to make a decision or reconsider at this time. However, I will take the information presented under consideration.
Can you please put it into the agenda instead of just making it at the end of a meeting? That'd be great. So we know to come and hear what you have to say?
Yeah.
Well, we have something to finally say on it. Well, we have something to formally say on it. I agree.
Sounds fine.
I would like to just say this. I understand, and this is a thing we did a lot, and I, it's frustrating, it's not a hard choice. So if you need to wait, that's one thing, just understand that if we don't put in our dues by June 30th, we lose all of the positions that I have. So on the, all the committees. So if you are willing to throw that away, if that's your choice, I donate my time for free for this town, and you will just be throwing that away. So that's a choice you're making to wait, I'm not sure what you're looking to review, but thank you.
All right. Moving on. Regular business, town administrator?
Sure. First up, I've got this special town meeting. I've got the formal complaint from the attorney in the Superior Court that if the board is agreeable, you could sign this evening. What the attorney, Stephen Whitley, is suggesting to me, after doing some research and some light work here, is that we try to schedule the deliberative session for, on or about July 13th, and the actual election on the special matter on August 17th. And he's using the language "on" or "about" those dates, so we could move them. But that is in keeping with how long it's going to take the court to issue this and how long we need between sessions. We have to have 30 days between deliberatives, we have to have a certain number of days to announce the deliberative, we're trying to stay away from things like July 14th again.
But we still don't have anything from Fire Chief in terms of any availabilities in any of these?
He has let me know that they have several potential leads, all in the ballpark of $900,000 that he feels he could have in mind.
Sounds kind of iffy.
It does, and the language that we've put in the petition, Steve has been asking me for information, putting in petition, sending it back, asking me whether I think this looks okay, and we've got basically appropriating up to $930,000, which would be everything that's in that fire equipment capital reserve fund and probably require some of the contingency.
So basically, it's kind of like a deliberative session and then a vote 30 days afterwards?
It's, yes, it's set up exactly like a regular deliberative session and regular election.
So the only opportunity to change that number is at that first session?
Right, and, but the way it's written is up to 930. So you could certainly spend $890, or you could find a bargain for $750.
Is it over?
Yeah. You can't spend...
You can't spend what you don't have.
Well, you could go back to the DRA, I suppose, now that you have special permission to expand it.
Shall I do that? I don't know. I'm, I was hoping by this time the chief would have some kind of handle on terms of what was available, what was not available. So if he has no specific... My concern is, we do all this paperwork, we get it in place, and then the chief doesn't find anything. Or he finds something that's a million. So then we have to go and start this process all over.
Yep, the information that's been conveyed to me has been very general in nature. We've talked with several manufacturers, we have several models in mind, and we're looking at somewhere in the $895,000 range with the cost of adding things to it that would bring it potentially into the $920 to $930 range.
Thoughts, gentlemen? Personally, I would rather wait for us to do this until we actually find a vehicle or vehicles that meet our, you know, criteria. Because if he can't find anything, or nothing's available, or by the time he gets there, they've been sold to somebody else, because we're not the only ones. Well, they're going to start this whole process all over again.
The other side of the coin is, is that will they hold something?
No. Remember you asked this question of Chief Nemeth when he was here? And he said if he didn't, if for some reason that vehicle that he found was not available by the time we got through all of this, that there would be another one in the pipeline.
He thought that they were, at the time that he spoke to you previously, he had leads on eight potential trucks, and felt that if, you know, the specific one they wanted fell through, there would be another option available.
So what's the language in the petition?
The language, well, it's quite a bit of language throughout the whole thing, but the beginning is, the special meeting is specifically called for the purpose of appropriating up to approximately $930,000 in funds to finance the purchase of a new fire truck and further to authorize the withdrawal of those funds from a previously created capital reserve fund. The selectmen believe, the select board believe and therefore allege that an emergency has arisen in the town which requires a special town meeting for the purposes and...
So how long do we have to spend that? The whole fiscal year?
I believe you would, yes.
All right, all right. So...
And he's left it as general as he...
Really? We can get authorization, and if he can never find anything, we don't have to spend it?
Yeah, so let's, I think we should move forward.
That's fine.
Okay. I'm going to take the schedule of my notes off the back, and if I can get the three of you to sign that, and then I'll have Denise to notarize it. And I'll send you copies of the actual petition too. It's fairly rugged, straightforward.
For those listening and those in attendance while we're sitting here, our fire truck engine number one has let a rust and a crack in the frame, so it cannot be used anymore. It was scheduled to be replaced next fiscal year, it was next fiscal year. So in this instance, we have to find something to provide that particular service for the fire department. So we're asking for a special meeting exception from the Superior Court to have a, basically, another deliberative session and then a vote to be able to get those monies out of the capital reserve fund. So that's what we're doing.
And there's a very explicit timeline that goes along with posing this. We followed the first three aspects of it, and we do have to immediately pose that you have signed this. Okay, I'll get that ruling. I'll also send you the calendar that I have for all the dates and notifications, and check with the other parties involved and make sure that date frame works. Next thing I had was bank signature card. Did get a card, and I have the chair and the vice chair need to sign this. I did not put it in the agenda because I don't generally post our bank account information...
Don't do that, or you want me to do it first?
There and there. I completed my cards, and Toon Ha is coming in to complete his this week.
What about this thing down here? If existing signer enter RM number?
That, the bank will fill in, and you're not an existing signer with TD, so there's...
Eight signed?
Yes.
Six.
After this is processed, you will have an RM number.
How exciting. That's $6 will give me a coffee star, right?
It won't get you much out of TD, their new security measures. Even if you show up every day with the town deposit, you better have a license and account numbers, and very rigorous. Okay. A couple of miscellaneous things. I talked with Annie Gassowski of the Library Trustees, and at this point in time, they are shelving the vestibule and ramp program. She made it very clear to me that they are not interested in an 8x10 vestibule or just a minimum bare-bones ramp. They want to rethink and retool how they want to proceed. So at this point, they're bringing this in the back burner. Asked if I could communicate that to board.
Okay.
So I said, I would.
Talk to the monies. I thought it was a grant.
It was a $20,000 grant.
$20,000 of it was a grant, yeah.
It stays intact?
I believe so, or they believe so. I didn't get into all the specifics.
Usually there's a sunset clause on these things.
Yep. I can verify, and I'll probably do that with Haley.
Okay.
I think she's got the paperwork for that grant and applied for it, so I can verify what the expiration date is.
Thank you.
With regard to the library siding, we have a new attorney, Joseph Driscoll. We are moving forward with that. We've got an estimate from local contractors in town for the cost of redoing that, and essentially, our plan is to demand $17,250 and push from there.
Thanks.
The last minute addition to miscellaneous, I'm participating in a fire regional district team meetings. I think we switched it from Zooms, meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 with the Madbury Town Administrator, the Barrington Town Administrator, Tom Purley, the Madbury Fire Chief, and Scott Nemeth, the Lee Fire Chief. And just as a sort of a precursor to the regionalization meeting that is on the 16th of June on Monday evening at 6:00 PM in Madbury. And just to keep the board apprised, I had a conversation with the Madbury Town Administrator last week. The Madbury Select Board and the Town Administrator were not that happy because no one had informed them that this project was moving forward. In fact, no one had informed them that the regional meeting was at their public safety complex. So they've got some concerns with a couple of the items in the plan that Chief Nemeth presented. I know one of the more important ones is they don't want to take any ceremonial votes on moving forward. They feel it'd be better to skip the ceremony, and if actual votes are needed, they should be taken at the time they're needed. And have some other concerns that we're going to discuss tomorrow night, and I will relay it to the board.
You said six?
At 6 o'clock on the 16th at the Madbury Public Safety Building. And I believe after tomorrow night, I'll have more of an agenda that I can send you as well. And that was all that I have this evening. Okay?
Consent in general, anything, anybody wants to vote?
No.
So I move to accept that consent, agenda is presented, I have a second. Sorry, any discussion? No? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any passes? Are we going to get to see the new officer?
Yeah, would you like to meet him right now?
I know, is he available, or she? It is. Is he free or...?
I was waiting for him to tech, for the sergeant to tech.
No, old business, new business, can we have a conversation with Mr. Tappin about, one, I believe the board was supposed to get a cover sheet of what was being requested. So far, I have not received that yet, so I'm wondering where that is. That was in our instructions, so...
Okay, I think the actual, I can get you certainly a cover sheet. The actual instructions said that it, that chairman of the trustees of the trust fund could rely on the signatures of the town administrator and/or the bookkeeper with the requests and to acquire the select board.
No, I do not want to sign it, but we were told that the cover letter should be sent to us.
I will, I will get you a cover letter tomorrow morning.
Mr. Tappin, would you talk to us about what is in there and what is not in there?
I'm John Tappin, chair and bookkeeper for the trustees of trust funds. There, in the request that we received, there were reverse requests from four funds, from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, from downtown buildings Capital Reserve Fund, Fire Ponds and Cisterns Capital Reserve Fund, and from Highway Equipment. I mentioned the total for the library Capital Reserve Fund, $197,868.69. Town Buildings is just $59.55, that's for the library furnace replacement. Fire Ponds and Cisterns, this was for the repair to Elder Osborne Road cistern. And there was two invoices, one was us doing the repair, and then the second one was doing, refilling the cistern after the repair. Push back up. The one from Town Buildings, that was voted by the select board on March 17th of this year. The Fire Ponds and Cisterns, those were approved by the select board on 6/10 of 2024 and then on 3/3 of 2025. That was to do the refill. And then last one was the Highway Equipment, and there were two invoices for that. The first was the loader tires, $8,086. And then the second was, when they went to replace the tires, they found that there was some wheel rim parts that had to be replaced, and that was another $1,307. I was asked at that meeting whether or not that was a capital expense, and then I stated for something like loader tires, which in our use of a loader, they last a couple decades or more, that it was a capital expense. So the total there was $9,393. So the total that's being requested is just a little shy of $220,000. The amount for the other three funds, not counting the library, the total there is $22,028.92. So for those other three funds, all of those expenses, expenditures came to the select board, the select board approved them for those amounts that are being requested. We have the invoices, invoice amounts all match the requested amounts. So the only issue, and it's the same kind of issue that came up for the previous fiscal year, is that the $197,000, almost $198,000 from the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, none of that ever came to the select board. And the voters voted for a $200,000 toward library renovations, just as a sitting... Just as sitting in the audience, I heard the Select Board on more than one occasion ask how much has been expended of that $200,000. At a meeting, it was mentioned that that number was sent to the Select Board, but I don't know what that was. I have looked at what the library trustees have approved, and it's more than $197,000. So certainly something must have been charged to the $200,000. But all of these, all of these checks that are written on the check stub, it states that this is coming from the Lee Library Building CRF.
Which is not the $200,000.
That's not the $200,000?
Yeah.
No. That's the $197 that is being requested from the fund, which has less than $153,000 in it. And for expenses that have not been approved by the Select Board. So this looks like, just to repeat, of what happened the fiscal year 2024.
So except for the library one, the other three are okay?
Um, the, this, what I can say, the Trustees of Trust Funds have not had yet. We will be meeting, of course. So when I get the request, I make a checklist like this, and I go through looking for any sort of clerical errors. Any invoices that are missing, if the arithmetic doesn't add up, things like that. Or if any information is missing, such as where was the authorization? And then, because those clerical things are not the type of thing that the trustees need to meet to make a decision on, we don't need to, the trustees have no authority to release money for an expense that you have not approved if you are the agent to expend. So we don't need to, so just as an individual trustee, I can state, we can't do that. For these others, I see no clerical error, nothing, no information missing. All the information is there. So at least on that first pass through, there's no problem with it.
So in terms of the ones from the library, I guess, I know words in your mouth, but you're uncomfortable just looking at it that everything's not in place for that particular request? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, very simply, for the one for the library, the trustees would have to say no. We would have to refuse that reimbursement request because we have no authority to release funds unless the town or the town's agent has voted for that expenditure. And it has to be, we're very, we have no authority to make spending decisions, to say, this is a good expenditure, this is a bad expenditure, it's up to the town or the town's agent. And if the town or the town's agent has voted for that expenditure, if the expenditure meets the purpose of the fund, if we have documentation that shows that, and if the fund has enough money to cover that, we approve it. And if any of those are missing, we can't approve it.
Okay. From your, what you've seen, it sounds like some of that money, or most of that money, needs to come out of the $200,000 that's from taxation, general taxation, is that correct? Or not?
Correct. The, from the invoices that we've received, and from reading the library trustees' minutes, where they approve invoices. And one of the invoices that we received was not, I can't find it in any of their minutes. But the total appears to be about $290, I think it's $294,000.
$292, $294.
Okay. So really, some of those requests shouldn't even come into you. They should just come out of the $200,000.
That's what it would look like. And that would then bring the requested amount to fit within what's actually in the fund.
That would make sense.
And so that would also mean that what we would be receiving would not be just invoices. We would be receiving an accounting of the entire project because I'm sure that there are not invoices that add up to exactly $200,000. So it would seem total, and then minus $200,000, and we would be reimbursing for the balance.
So I guess this is one of the reasons that, I don't know, for some reason this keeps happening, and it's very disconcerting. But that's why we want it earlier, so that when something like this comes up. Because right now, you've got, what? Twenty-one days, you know, they used to get this all cleared up, and they have to meet sometimes in the middle of that. So it's not very convenient.
When we put in the request for the timing, it was intentional that if we received it in May, the trustees were holding in our own calendars that date on the 4th, this past Wednesday, when we were going to meet. So that we, any, any issues that we had, we would be able to get to the board in time for you to answer that, and still have one more regularly scheduled board meeting before the end of the fiscal year. Now, we recognize, and I'm sure that the auditors do not expect, that in every year, all expenses will be reimbursed within the year. Because you can have expenses that come up in June, maybe even very late in June, and they may not get reimbursed.
Can you go over itself? It was Town Buildings, the library, or the other ones?
Fire Ponds and Cisterns.
Fire Ponds, what's the fourth one?
And Highway Equipment.
So nothing from accrued benefits?
I, there was nothing from accrued benefits, and I asked because in 15 out of the last 18 years, there have been accrued benefits expenses coming out of the fund. So I asked Taylor this morning, and she said, no, in fact, there are, there weren't any this year.
Didn't you have a police officer leave?
They've got much time on.
Oh, so there was no payments to them?
All their accrued time had been used.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. So none?
Nothing that I'm aware of. The only thing that comes up is a senior DPW worker who is leaving, but his last day is June 30th, so that will, most likely hit the next button, so.
So make it, what, four instances in the last 20 years will be any?
Four in the last 19.
Nineteen, okay, all right. All right. So I guess, I don't know if you gentlemen have any questions, but I think, Andy, you need to work with him to find out
Yep.
what needs to be resubmitted. And please do send us whatever the cover sheet is that was sent originally, and also when you send the secondary one of whatever it is. I, I'm not looking for the receipts and all the invoices, I'm just looking for the summary thing.
And no, the other thing, I will send you, some months back, I had dug into this concern after having a discussion with you about library expenditures, and I'll get a breakdown of those. Just update the one that I'd sent you, because I think that went in January or February, maybe. As to what I have on the accounting side for requests from the library and where they thought it was coming from.
So I guess there's one invoice that wasn't approved or something?
There was one invoice which was signed by the Chair of the Library Trustees on the day after a library trustees' meeting. And the minutes from that library trustees' meeting do not mention that invoice. So, maybe you mistaken the minutes, I don't know, but.
But we get authorization from somebody before we issue checks for those purposes, correct?
Well, these were, for the most part, ongoing payments to vendors that were completing the project. So I don't know that, once the project had been approved, that they would come back to you with every invoice, because they made monthly installments or.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to see those, just as long as you know that they're approved, those particular.
Every, every invoice that we've received a copy of has the signature of the Chair of the Library Trustees on it, saying something like, "Okay," and a date, and has her signature.
I just want to make sure that they're approving these things and we're just not.
Yeah, these were, these were ongoing installment payments to the project.
All right.
How was all of them, went to milestone construction or Shear McChrystal Paulson Architecture?
Okay. Thank you. Is it also Mr. Tappin, or you could?
All right. Could join under L and C.
I want an A as well, sir. Moved into non-public session, room number 91A, colon 3, room number 2, sections A, C, and L. Do I have a second?
David.
Dave. Roll call, Dave Benson.
Aye.
John, of course.
Yes.
Scott Bogby, yes. Motion passes.
We can all live in a room where you can light the fire.
Bye.